Oh yeah, where's Sam?
Where is Sam?
I don't know, nobody's heard from him, so.
He didn't, uh...
Yeah.
Sam? Do you want to... Oh, okay.
All right, uh, let's see, good evening, 6:22, we got started, if you didn't get that for your notes, this is a special session, we've got a lot to go over, continue to discuss from the workshop, so we'll jump right in. Citizen comments, we have none signed up, so we can move right into, uh, public hearings. We'll open a public hearing, uh, to discuss, uh, essentially, we're going to be discussing the ordinance 25008, which, uh, adjusts the 2024 budget process, so we'll open the public hearing, if our residents have, uh, any comments or concerns, you are welcome to approach the podium at this time and share your thoughts. Stampede to the podium, okay? Uh, if nobody has any comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, we'll move on to ordinance 25008, discuss, consider ordinance approving the FY 2024 budget amendment and carry forward. Uh, we did discuss some of this, uh, you guys are all here, so I won't rehash it. Mary, do you want to, uh, bring us up to speed again on, uh, anything that we didn't discuss already, and then we can open it for discussion.
It's just, uh, recognizing the, uh, insurance proceeds that were received in fiscal year 24, and, uh, rolling over those expenses to, uh, well, recognizing the revenue and then also moving that revenue for, to pay for the expenses that are incurred in fiscal year 25, and it's also moving over the budget for the vehicle that was budgeted for at 76,000, rolling that over to, uh, 25, but the vehicle expense, just remember, was 80,900, not 76,000.
Okay, thank you, counsel, if, uh, we get a motion for ordinance 25008?
I move we accept our ordinance 25008.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Pass is unanimous. All right, next, uh, 25006, public hearing, again, same, uh, same situation, we're going to open a public hearing to discuss the FY 2025 budget amendment recognizing revenue and expenditures. Uh, so, public hearing is open, if our residents have any comments, you're welcome to come up and make them. Thank you very much, we'll close the public hearing. Guys are making this easy for me. And Mary, 25009, discuss, consider ordinance approving FY 2025 budget amendment recognizing revenue and expenditures.
Yes, with, uh, the correction on that line item where it's the negative 156, I apologize, should be 30, excuse me, 20, 30, 6,300, that's, uh, one of the, I guess, uh, corrections that needs to be done on that ordinance, uh, but basically, it's again paying, uh, for the vehicle for, uh, that's now at 80,900 for this fiscal year, so it's reducing, uh, taking money out of that account that we have, um, to pay for that, also, uh, for a wood chipper, mulcher machine that we need to have as we go through and do the pickups, so that, uh, BJ and his crew can go and take care of things on the spot, it's a heavy-duty one, it, that should help tremendously, and also to repurchase rental equipment for the brush removal, we do have, uh, a situation that really needs to be dealt with, and so that equipment will help, uh, with mitigate that issue that's going on, um, by the burn pit. Also, the building, um, improvements that we need, we do have a situation where we have some, uh, toilets and some things that need to get done with the facilities, and we also have an enhanced security system that we are, we really need for the city to, uh, to keep us safe, our data safe, and also, um, keep track of our property. And then we also have $10,000 on fire truck upgrades, which is includes, uh, some tires for the fire truck to make sure that it's safe for our firemen, and then, of course, we have that FTE for the fire mitigation, uh, position that's in your packet, in your packet, you have a copy of, uh, the memo from our chief of the fire department and the original draft. I do want to, uh, call, uh, some attention to this particular, uh, handout that is in that program, it does have the breakdown of the cost for a, uh, brand-new, uh, fireman for this, or an employee to meet this program needs, as well as an experienced one that if they, if they were selected or if they approved or applied to be considered, so that's why that amount is in that budget amendment.
I just want to add a few things, Mayor, if it's all right. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I want to ask Taren to come up and just, uh, kind of give us a quick overview on what we're talking about here, but he's one part of the puzzle, there is a lot of green easements that we've heard about over the years, uh, residents have known about, and they're wanting something done, obviously, council has voiced that same, um, uh, concern that it has, needs to be addressed, uh, we're talking about vegetative debris in the green easements, we're also talking about on private property where a lot of the, the, uh, debris's added up over the years from storms and what have you, and now that's a hazard, we've got plenty of hazard from the, and even to our pit, we had a little fire there, what, a few days back, and, um, it went, it worked out all right because someone was there, but we're trying to push that stuff away, we're trying to get rid of that debris, if we can't give it away, we're going to have to pay to have it hauled off, it's, it's a threat, we just can't leave it there, um, that said, we're not there yet, but we'll, we'll take one stab at a time. The big thing about this fuel mitigation program, yes, uh, fires, we've got this position here, which will serve multiple roles, one is, he'll be able to fill on, fill in on the days off of other key personnel, uh, that aren't shift, but two, it will also start addressing some of this stuff that will probably take years to address and maintain for future years, so to think of it this way, it's not just fire position we're doing, we're, that chipper is an industrial strength one, and we want to, what we're trying to accomplish is, when we go in, we don't have to have, uh, a truck to carry that stuff out, we're going to chip it right there on the spot, spread it, BJ's well aware, he's talked to Taren about this project, um, we know that this is going to be something we're going to have to live with, so the sooner we start, the better it will be, and we're really getting in that season where anything we can do to mitigate that threat, the better, this fire position, we'll assess it, and I'll ask Taren if you'll just talk about how, we'll just do an overall assessment and where we're going to shift those resources first, but I think it's an important program, you talked about it, Dorothy, about how this is right up there with audits, can't agree more, um, what's used to having roads, I think, we've heard this before, if you, if you don't have a town to, to have there, so I think it's really important to focus our attention where we're doing it, unfortunately, it's not the way we really planned it, but it's something that needs to be done, and I think it's the, it's a prudent path forward, go ahead, uh, Taren, if you would.
As Taren's walking up, I just want to say too, it is doing, um, wildfire mitigation or prevention, but it's also cleaning up our city quite a bit.
Very much so.
We have been, um, delinquent, I don't know what the right word is, but we have not stayed on top of the fallow lots, where no one's living there, and we also haven't stayed on top of our green spaces, our, our easements, so this is coming to a head because of the tornado we had, and then just all the excess trees that are down now, so it's...
And speak...
It's not, it, it's, it's a, it's been building over time.
Right.
Yes, I want to say.
But you spent, uh, talking about private property owners, now, there's a lot of them that don't live in the city, so they're going to be notified that they're, that once they do their part and say, this property's been identified and these are the threats we see, they're going to be notified of that, uh, and we will pay the postage because it's so important to put them on notice, this needs to be dealt with. We are also working with, uh, of course, we're going to have curbside collection, that's another thing that's going to help, but we're also working on a program where if we can monetize this, where we can at least recover the city's costs, both in labor and equipment for this chipper and what have you, that's, that, we can make up, uh, that expense by setting up this program, because they can go on there and just add cost to the resident to have all this stuff done, they're not paying the profit margin, and it would be something, we would get some, uh, funds back to the city to keep that program moving forward.
Residents would pay for it?
For their, what's, if it's on private property, they would say, hey, look, I'd like to, um, hear, to the tree they want out, they'll mark it, we can have a grinder, we'll have a chipper, and we'll have a crew in there that can actually do, that's BJ's shop, uh, under the guidance of, uh, the fire department, under which, where we should start, but these people will be voluntarily, I'd say, willful compliance, if they'll do it, why not, as long as they're willing to offset the cost, the city's going to pay for it, we're not here to lose money, we're not here to, to, uh, make money or lose money, but we want to recoup those costs, that keeps the program going for future years. So, I'll turn, Dorothy?
Of course, there's a million things I want to say, but I'll be briefening, uh, thank you all for coming tonight, um, one thing I do want to echo real quick is, there's one part of this position that's not truly part of the wildfire position, and we do have a, uh, a holiday issue with the fire department where we're not, fire rescue's not taking the holiday time, there's, there's a lot in the city, we hope to add some capacity to our staffing, just in general, not just for that issue, but just in general, a real quick example, when the bee swarm act incident happened this weekend, um, we had Shane Sibley come in, who's on salary, to come in and fill in the back half, we just simply don't have a lot of resiliency. So, in the background of all this, I want you to keep in mind, we're actually also... I'm sorry, oh, I can try and speak loud, I'm trying to do the microphone, this, is that better? Uh, with, the bee swarm incident, just one of, 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 a few that happened this year, where we've had someone on salary, myself, or Chief Sibley, someone to come in and cover, that's what you do, but the bigger picture is the fire department does not have a lot of resiliency in staffing, so this is one little part of that, but speaking directly to the wildfire, and, and Ms. Hartman and, uh, Mr. Liner, you can, both attest, when I was here, when I took over in 2018, there was a $250,000 fire suppression project that was on the, on the table, I canceled, that my predecessor did to address wildfire, uh, canceled, went back and went after that company that had taken advantage of us and stuff, and not to really bring that up to the past, other than to say, you guys know that I wouldn't be standing here today if I didn't really believe that this was doable and sustainable, and we've got some good ideas on that, we just, not all that's come to light yet, um, but the wildfire risk we have is, is incredible, um, about a week ago, uh, last Tuesday, in fact, uh, we happened to have people here for training, and it was the police department that came outside and said, do you know your pit's on fire? Uh, and that's how disjointed the wildfire program is, and I mean, I'll just be honest with you, we didn't know the pit was on fire, we didn't have a smoke detector out there for one thing, but that fire cost, uh, over 6,000 gallons of city water used, uh, three fire departments, belt and temple, four, to belt and temple Moffett, Morgan's Point, 11 trucks and 23 personnel to put out over a two-day period, we just happen to have the time with all the stuff to actually put that on, 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 on the public yet, for y'all to see, but that is an ongoing problem, the bush, the piles back there, ongoing problem, so what we want to do is get ahead of that, not just to deal with what happened from the tornado, but for years to come, um, and even though, uh, BJ and I have a great relationship and always have, we don't talk a whole lot, there's, there's not a lot of time in the day between what, uh, Public Works does and what fire does, and all the other things we have going on, to actually communicate what needs to be done, and so the premise this, this, this individual, whoever we hire, we, the subject matter expert, they will also do community outreach, they'll come in and talk about the wildfire stuff, they'll do some of the things you've seen us do sporadically and, and kind of have one person get on deck and do, that'll be their job, uh, they'll also coordinate efforts between the fire department and public works, and, and, you know, part-time seasonal personnel, volunteers, you name it, all of the ideas have come up in here that have been great ideas, we haven't had a person to say, well, let me be in charge of that and organize that, I'm not in a position to do it, uh, I know BJ's not in a position to do it, and what we're looking for is someone that can bring those departments together and unify it and make your dollars go further. The wildfire situation we have right now, every single time it rains, as much as we like the rain, we look out and we see all the green, all I think is, there's more fuel going to Morgan's Point, and when y'all start driving through here in June, July, and you guys have lived here for a while, know the smell of burning cedar, and I'm not trying to do the babies in the street and we're all going to die of wildfire, but the reality is, it is, it's the most serious threat we, we have, so what I really, my, and my aspiration for this, my, my vision for this position is that we have someone that is the accountable subject matter expert, someone that's the go-to person, we want to talk about wildfire, you go to the wildfire fuels officer, that's also working the departments together and making the most, we can spend $109,000 on chipper, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, we should, um, but someone's got to run the chipper, and that's manual labor, but someone also has to figure out where in the city the chipper needs to go, uh, what makes the most sense, right now, we know we're moving fuel, we see fuel piling up behind the station, which is a good thing, but we don't know where it's coming from, um, the mapping program that we showed you guys during the tornado, we're using, we have 11 different firebox maps, we'll be using that, we've been integrating that in our responses already, we put something out recently, showed how many power lines had come down in particular boxes, there's three we know just from that data that are problematic, we're going to use that same approach and that same overlay with this individual to look at where the fuels are located, whether in private property or in public property, how do we, how do we work with, uh, Mike Reeves over in, uh, in, uh, your building, code enforcement guy, how do we work with Mike on that, uh, so there's a lot of dovetailing, it doesn't take place, and so what happens is, you get a really good fire department response when a fire happens, um, you get a really good utilities response, or, I'm sorry, public works response when you need fuels cleared, and I know that might be up for debate because everyone wants fuels cleared, but we really do, and we really get a really good, um, public works response, we need water on our fire, utilities, we need water on our fires, but we're not all communicating together, and that is the goal of this, is to actually have someone that'll communicate, not just with us in our own departments, but with you guys in the community, uh, and really work to address a problem that, that's been here since before my time, and, and honestly, it'll be here after I'm gone, and so that's, that's kind of my, my elevator sales pitch on it, if y'all have questions, by all means, it's in your packet, shoot, um, I'm up here for whatever you want to ask me about. Okay, thank you.
Uh, if I can add one thing, just before I open it up for council to, to discuss, I want to go back to the, the pit fire that Chief talked about, because I know we have some influential residents here that talk to other residents, so, um, this occurred to me after, after the, uh, after the event, I was thinking about it, I know the pit is near and dear to everybody's heart, being able to just drive up and drop off their own brush, uh, I know we've, we've been getting a lot of pushback on why can't we, why can't we, why, why can't we, um, I will tell you that if things had been a little bit different that night, we would have, just with the way it was sitting, we would have had a disaster, fortunately, everything was going away from our chip piles, um, but more importantly, if it, if we had opened the pit like we used to and just let all our residents pile brush in, there would have been a lot more fuels back there than we had, um, so that's just kind of food for thought, my observations, being back there that night, um, for our residents, I get it, you want to drop your brush off, but we just, it's not smart, it's not safe to do, so, with that said, that's my two cents, um, for council, uh, I'll accept, uh, a motion for 25009, discuss, consider ordinance approving the FY 2025 budget amendment recognizing revenue and expenditures.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
What rental equipment are we looking at?
The rental equipment he's referring to, I believe, is going to be the equipment we're using right now to move the brush piles, is that what we, okay, what's the number on it? We had the forestry service down here, and they, we did a walkthrough, fire, uh, forestry service and myself, we did a walkthrough to look at, uh, what they're seeing and what they're recommending to do, and one of the things is to move those piles away from the tree line, first and foremost, and, um, but it was going to cost us around, I think he said, 2,500 to 3,000 dollars for one week, he found a supplier of rental equipment that said, we can give you this piece of equipment for, was it, how much the total price, 6,000?
Yeah, it was, it was close, it was over 5,000.
Over 5,000, under 6,000, for a whole month, well, we've got so much other, we found piles that have been just thrown back there, that need to be collected up, that are fire hazard, we've got other areas around the, uh, range, gunfire range that the police use, that needs to be, uh, recommended to be, uh, pulled that, uh, some of that fuel away from the berm, um, there's so much out there, it's 35 acres, and BJ said it'd be nice if he could just have it for like 30 days and get so much more accomplished, we need to get it, mow it, and get it where it's, uh, just so many different things that need to be addressed, from brush to weeds to, um, um, pass dumping to, and not, it's our own stuff, but again, like the mayor says, it doesn't need to be there, plus TCQ says, if you can't, you're going to burn, you can only burn once every other month, is that what the, what they told us, once every other month for the burns? No, well, but they didn't say how long the burn could last, but, but, now, that's Dennis talking, that doesn't mean don't, don't use that, I'm just saying that, but that's one of the things, and on the condition they sent us, there's only a few exemptions, and one of the conditions is that we have to collect it, the residents cannot drop it off, so there's a lot of things happening that to stay in regulatory compliance, we have to figure out a way to do this that makes much, most sense, we did get an extension recently, NIDA applied for extension, and we've got it for another two months, I believe. Okay, so we're still trying to get rid of that debris and use what we can, and we're going to hang on to that as long as we can before we give in, but that's what the rental equipment's for, is to get that stuff, and not just those piles, but also other things that's been laying around for some time.
Well, that was my, my concern is that the equipment would just be rented for X number of days, but not utilized for the full days.
Yeah.
But we got work for it, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, BJ specifically said it'd be nice if he can just have it, so I can do all of it and get it all done, I said, go for it, and he says, I, he actually got it, basically, we may have gotten two weeks at the most, and we got a full month out of, use out of it from this other, uh, company.
It was a great deal. I just want to make a funding comment on this, and, and I mentioned this at the workshop, that in my mind, in my opinion, that our finances and our accounting systems, getting those under control, and then getting this brush under control, there are no other higher priorities in my mind for this city at this moment. Than those two things, absolutely, and so I think that we do need to allocate resources to those, um, I would ask, is there any place that we can cut back, um, that aren't mission critical, um, so that we're just not having an incremental headcount and incremental $156,000 expense, and I know the capital, that's separate, but, um, incrementally about $100,000 a year going forward, is there anything we can cut back on?
Well...
Besides roads, because I know this proposal is taking it out of the roads expense and funding this, this budget amendment.
Uh, to be frank, I, I don't know until I see the proposed budget with all the, I mean, we got a mini pumper, we got a fund, for sure, that's 75,000...
And that's where I am, Dennis, I don't have financial information.
Okay.
It's really hard for me to authorize incremental positions, incremental expenses, I don't know where we came out for the fiscal year ending '24, I haven't seen a P and L, I don't know how far we were in the hole last year, you know, we did put $800,000 into, um, cleanup, which we absolutely should have done, those, those were all the right decisions, I'm not questioning any of the decisions, I'm questioning where are we financially, and then where are we seven months into '25 relative to budget, are we ahead of budget? Do we have some things that we're not doing?
Yeah, that's why we're preventing, they're providing you the budget versus the actual, cleanup goes continues, now, remember, that was, we gave you the what we had, and now every time you look at a budget versus actual, it, and this budget amendment's not on there, but so that will be moving things around.
No, I'm asking you, as our city manager, are there areas, seven months into the year, that we have flexibility in our budget, where we have the property taxes that have come in, and we haven't spent the expenses yet, other than roads?
Well, yeah, you could take it to some other programs, I'm not sure I would do that right now, that's the one thing, let me put it this way, let's say we take out our roads, we find out we're not going to do all the engineering, and we got stormwater, I'm just using the example, but it moved from one fund to another, it would take council's approval, if that's the case, then that may make up, say, 50,000 of that, but let me add something else to this, there's still, you talked about the 800,000 we spent, we have, I'm just using an example, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I will say FEMA is going to give back 675,000, we only projected, because we only knew 75%, we only expected about 614,000 return, well, we got...
That's 60 right there.
That's 60 right there, but we don't have that yet, we don't have that yet, until that...
Is it reasonably assured?
Yeah, they, they awarded...
Can we report it as a receivable?
Let me, okay.
And the, and the revenue, and then take that six, take at least 60 of it out of the excess FEMA money?
I would, I would rather, as a city manager, I would rather go with what we have in hand today and not count on something that I don't have, and that, yes, I have every reasonably, TDM's going to provide that other 25%, we've got probably 20, 275 to 300,000 more coming from FEMA from these other things we've applied for, but I'm not getting ahead of myself, I just, I, hope's not a strategy, and I'd rather go with what I know, I can always come back when I get those dollars and say, can we do this, move these dollars back into this and still get this work done, I don't want to do it the other way around, I don't want to just hope that it's going to come in.
When do you think we'll get the FEMA money?
Well, we were hoping, we got, we got 505,000, now, remember, that's not new revenue, that's why you're not seeing it, we anticipated getting 614, so the 505 we have, and it's already in the bank, the 168 is due to come in, I'm assuming any day now...
We've been check, I've been checking every hour. I've been checking every hour.
So, can we, can we say then, that temporarily, in this budget amendment, we're going to take it out of roads, but the next budget amendment that gets presented, once that we get the FEMA and the other money, that we put it back into...
I would much rather, council, this is my suggestion, is to take it at face value, you're moving money, you're adjusting them, that budget, and it's the new budget when you adjust it, whether we get that money next week, two weeks from now, or that 300,000 that's up to 300,000 that we haven't received yet, that we weren't planning on getting that full amount, that stuff, uh, may or may not, but I'd always reckon my, recognize it and say for what it is, or say it what it is, and not say, well, temporarily or anything, you're, you've got what you've got, I'd recommend you take it and then recognize those revenues and see what you're facing then, I don't have a, a crystal ball, just like I, I said when we adopted this budget...
But we don't have a historical ball either, we don't even know, we do not know where...
You've got more accurate information today, and that monthly, that budget versus actual than you've ever had, I can almost attest for the last five or six years, now that's, that's truth, because now we know what our revenues are coming in and where we're not, we're telling you where there's still some adjustments.
I don't know last year, do you know last year?
No one knows last year, and honestly, no one knew that we spent two year, two months of this fiscal year paying last year's bills, but it's been going on for years, so you didn't have a procurement module.
I just want to be really fiscally conservative on adding incremental headcounts.
Right, I, I understand that, and, and this is how it works from my desk, if for some reason we budget, this, this thing passes tonight, then when we prepare that proposed budget, that's factored in first and foremost, and other things may or may not even be included for the next budget, but if we don't rely on the strategic adjustments, whether it's revenue expenses, and able to respond to the need at, that we have, and I think we're, we're, we're not firing on all cylinders.
I'm not saying that, you didn't hear me say that.
Well...
Those are the highest priorities we have, so, yeah, I'm not saying...
Yeah, but I can't guarantee or temporarily doing anything at this stage, you've got this before you, I think the best thing to do, honestly, is to say, yes, yes, if you do it, or no, you don't, but I can guarantee you the revenues are coming in, she told you earlier, revenues are going to be once a month kind of thing, we're not going to put this thing on a back burner, those days are gone, and I hate bragging, so I'm just going to say, it's not me, but I want you to tell me what they told us, council here, what they told you the last three months on the revenues and expenses, what your, what we, what their opinion of it was.
Well, first of all, they, I mean, again, I go back to me and Amanda, but Amanda helping out, this could not have been done for the revenue part, the expenses, the department heads had been, it, they said it's a mess, right, it was a mess, we all know it was a mess, but that in the past three months, they know that what we've done has been spot-on, and if we just continue down this track, we'll be okay, and I go back to, you know...
Don't hear me say we're not cleaning up, what I'm saying is, we want to have an incremental position, is there any other place in the budget we can cut it?
Not until...
See, I'm hearing no, and that's fine.
And the reason I want to qualify this, because until I know all bills are paid, and that everything is aligned where it's supposed to be, I don't feel comfortable saying that, and I won't use hope as a strategy, I believe we're tracking exactly the way we should be, I think every month, like I told you, we'll get that much better.
I think I beat this up enough, to be honest, and I don't want anyone to feel like they're not working their little tissues off to get us accurate information, all I'm saying is, I don't have it, you're asking us to make a decision, and I've, I've said enough, but going forward, um...
I can assure you...
We need to cut other areas when we add incremental headcounts, and not just take it from roads, we did this last year, too.
Well, if only, one last thing, if you end up taking, if you, cutting anywhere right now, except the absolute must, that, if you have to, you have to, but just like we didn't factor in $30,000 extra from IRS bills, that we had to pay from 2020, 2019...
Yeah, it was, it was 24,000.
Yeah, that came out of this year's budget.
24,000, that's 50.
My point is, that wasn't, that wasn't planned, so now we have to make adjustments for that, so there's a lot of this stuff that's going on, revenues and expenses, adjusting those as we go, my goal is to strike right where we should be, or actually better than we, and I'm looking at the revenue coming in, both, uh, of course, even that was messed up, um, there's so many different stories, we could tell you for days, okay, the bottom line is, is that you'll get that revenue expenses daily, I would say, based on what you know today, and not what may happen tomorrow, because that's what I have to deal with daily, because I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, uh, but I do know right now, that is, like you said, it's a top priority, and I, we will always adjust that budget to make sure we can fund this program moving forward, and that's in the proposed budget you'll see, that's all I can really assure you.
Roxanne.
I'd like to, I'm, I'm listening to all this, and I was thinking back to when we had a tornado, and all of a sudden, as council, we had to vote on that $800,000 expenditure that came up out of the blue, and we had no choice, when I look at this, um, amendment that we're, we're looking at right now, I think we're in the same, I think we are in the same boat, in my opinion, this is a absolute must, because if our, if our city goes down in flames, we have nothing, and so I would like to, um, propose, and that I would like to, to make a motion to, um, approve ordinance 25009, and to, um, change the fiscal year budget amendment recognizing revenue expenses as presented to us.
Okay, do I have a second?
I just want to comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
I agree, priorities change, okay? And the stuff that's coming up now with the brush control definitely takes priority right now over the roads, okay? Then one issue I do have is taking money that we've set aside for roads and using it for something else when roads have been such a hot, hot, hot topic. I'm going back a long time ago, eight, 10 years, okay? So for me to approve this, you know, I understand what Dorothy's saying, is how do we get that money back? I understand what you're saying, but if we do this and it passes, then let it be known that we're going to hold your feet to the fire to reimburse that or to get that money back in the road somehow, because next year, we don't want to go into it with a deficit of what we had this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I understand where you're coming from. Think of it as your budget's going to be for that 12-month period based on those revenues we identified, and brush is a unique situation here that we're going to have to have other discussions, but that's for another day. But I understand where you're coming from. I understand the concern about, in fact, I think Taryn will tell you, disposition, you came in the office probably a couple of months ago, where is it at? And I said, what did I tell you? It's a recurring cost, and it's got to be something I'm comfortable with. And if I wasn't comfortable with it, I'm letting you know, I wouldn't have brought it. I just wouldn't have done it. I would have found another solution to the problem, and that means probably reducing staff and realigning stuff. I mean, if I could have done that, I would have, if I thought that was the only way to do it. I see a path forward, but Taryn will tell you, I've said, well, hold off, because that's one thing I can't guarantee right now. I'm not, to this point, I feel pretty comfortable that I know that it's doable, and now whether it stays that way in future years, that depends on what council chooses to do and what the city manager recommends and what have you. But this is something that needs to stay in the system. This is a, this is, this is like water lines.
This is our city.
Yeah, it's like water lines. If you don't have, you don't have water, you don't have, this is the biggest threat you're facing, I think. My goodness, the lightning strikes were going yesterday, or I was thinking, I was thinking, oh my goodness. I'm sure Taryn was, too.
I was, too.
The tariffs were really low and hitting hard.
I was, too. Well, I'd like to make a second to go ahead and adopt this amendment with that one minor, where's Mary, that one minor correction on.
The 6300.
Out of expenses and revenue, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Of course not? Unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations, chief. Go forth and find a body.
I know it's the right decision. Absolutely. I do.
Okay, moving on, resolutions. Resolution 25015, for the audience, that was discussed during the workshop. Man, workshop, enunciate, usual letters. Letters are hard. And you want me to be on the, you want me to be on the investment thing? Yeah, okay, numbers are harder, or, all right, I digress. Yes, so 25015, discuss and consider resolution, electing council member Roxanne Stryker as mayor pro temp for the 25-26 term. We did that during our last council. However, we are cleaning up some paperwork. We didn't actually have a resolution saying as such. So 25015, if there's no discussion, I'll accept a motion to accept.
I would do a motion for RS 25015 to discuss and consider a resolution neglecting Roxanne Stryker as mayor pro temp for the 25-26 term.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it with the minor adjustment to the resolution, that it be called a special session instead of a regular session.
That's in section three.
Section three.
Got you, okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Resolutions adopted. 25018, discuss and consider the FYE 2024-25 Audit Engagement Letter with Brooks, Watson and Company, authorizes city manager execute a contract for said services. That's also in our packet we discussed during the workshop for our residents. Essentially, what that does is it allows us to continue services with Brooks, Watson and Company for our audits and keep those moving forward.
I will just, Mayor, can I?
Please, please.
I will just add one more thing, is that, as we talked about during the workshop, just in case some people didn't hear, we are already starting gathering the stuff for '24. As we know, they're asking for '23. Mary's asking for '24, and she's getting that stuff to them as well. I do think it's, we're going to start picking up our steam a little bit faster, hoping to have this audit for '23 next, next month, and I'm hoping to go right into '24 and get that knocked out. '25's not due until, we won't be able to do it until we do a fiscal year close, but I am confident that the way we're moving will definitely be on time, on target with that one. That's all.
Counsel? I will accept a motion for 25018.
I'll make the motion that we accept resolution 25018, discuss and consider the FY24, FY25 Audit Engagement Letter with Brooks, Watson and Company, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract for said services.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? I'm sorry, any other discussion? No? Okay, sorry, jumped the gun. All those in favor, got four hands, those opposed? Unanimous.
And I just want to comment that we got several handouts tonight that weren't in the packet, and I would like Mary's handouts to be included in the packet online on the website, because she did an outstanding job of giving us a whole update on the '23 audit, the '24 audit, and then going into next year, which we haven't seen in a while, so I really appreciate that. And I'd like to see residents have the benefit of this information also.
Yeah, the proposed budget will be coming, we're going to go back in the '26 fiscal year during discussion, and I wanted to pass some things out to you and have some discussions that will help bring things in perspective.
All right, next on The Price is Right, we've got resolution 25019, discuss and consider resolution to amend authorized representative for the Texas Local Government Investment Pool, Tex Pool, also discussed during our workshop, which essentially grabs, grabs. Good Lord. Grants us the authority and the rights to look at our own accounts. So if there is no additional discussion on that, I will accept a motion to adopt 25019.
Well, I would just like to reiterate what I said at the workshop, that I think the mayor should be added as a backup. Again, he's, was elected, no one even opposed him. I think he's trusted by the community, and I realize he's not an employee, but he's a resident. None of the employees are residents, and I would like to propose that.
Aren't we authorized?
It's right in here. It's Mary, Amanda, and Dennis.
No, that's the one we're asking to be authorized, yeah.
Nobody's authorized currently.
No one's authorized right now, is there? Yeah. And what rights do they have if they're authorized? Financial decisions and what have you, yeah. I, I'm just sorry, I would think right now, I'm asking for, as it's presented, I need some time to look at the other. We have to have internal controls, and this is part of it.
I think that is an internal control.
Well, I will disagree. I, like I said, but right now, as presented, we need to have access to things, so if that's the case, you might as well, on all accounts, do the same thing with it, and I'm not sure that's good. That the thing of it is, we are trying to have dual authorization. We're trying to make sure that we follow an investment policy. We're going to talk about that here in a little bit, as well, on my city manager updates, but what you have before you is what I'm asking and.
Yeah, and my understanding is that we have a pooled cash, which is where all the operating expenditures are put into, and this Tex Pool is an investment account. And Jimbo, as chairman of the investment committee, I think he would fit in there. I know you disagree with me, and I'm done. I already said what I want to say.
If I can, what I will do is follow up with Dennis, and we'll sit down and talk about it and take a look at the do's and don'ts and where, not just me, but this position would fit in moving forward, so, you know, when I move on, how the mayor fits into that. So I'm open to the idea, as long as it makes sense across the board, so we will continue to discuss that, and I will provide you guys feedback. Any other discussion?
So if we approve this now, and then you decide that we're going to put the mayor on later, we can just add that as another resolution? We can still go ahead and approve this as written?
We need to, because we don't have, we don't have the right people on it.
Yeah, I think, I think the wise thing is, yeah, I think the wise thing is to approve it as it's written right now, and then we can look into your proposal and see if that makes sense and, and readdress it.
I'll move to accept resolution 25019 to amend the authorized representatives to Texas Local Government Investment Pool as presented to us as Mary Tolman, Amanda Dominguez, and Dennis Baldwin.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second. Steven. No, go ahead, Steven.
Ladies first. Just pick one.
Since when?
Whether discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Four-nil. Unanimous. Okay, for those keeping score at home, I know it says we're going to adjourn here. However, we have some business to conduct or carry forward from the workshop, so.
We still need to adjourn.
Go, oh, that's right, so.
Adjourn the regular meeting, I guess. Adjourn the regular meeting.
Yeah. So we're going to go, we're going to go back and forth, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn the special section, we, section, session. I don't know what is going, we're going to, there's no additional discussion, we are going to go ahead and adjourn the special session at this time. 1903. Okay, and now we will reconvene back into the workshop for city manager update, finance director update, and executive session.
We had a couple, Mayor, we had a couple things like discuss.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
'26 budget.
Yep, yep. My apologies.
It's not, it's not executive session yet.
No, this is, we're back into the workshop.
We're getting the city manager updates right now.
City manager updates and stuff. Oh, okay. Yeah, but the other stuff is city manager and.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going back to the workshop. Well, this is on the budget, I mean, this is on the agenda that we're going to discuss the budget.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Mayor, city council, what you have before you is council CIP Strategic Planning Session Priorities. This is what we did back in February, and 22nd to be exact, and the asterisk, as it shows here at the top of it, ranking the highest priority will be four, and the lowest priority will be one. Then, and so what we got here, we broke it down, and you'll see this is similar to what you did before, but this is where it's all tallied and shows you the results. And the reason why this is important is because we have the upcoming fiscal year proposed budget we're working on for you, and I want to make sure that we're aligning our priorities with your priorities, our resources with your priorities. If you look at one to five, you'll see Waterwell, just to highlight, it's got four stars, so that was, that was one of the hit four, and say Park hit four, then it went down to Public Safety Facility and what have you. So you'll see the ranking of stars, one, for years one through five. At the very bottom, I highlighted in red, a sewer lift station removed based on free assessment. Stephen went ahead and looked at it, and he does not agree that it needs to be done. Stephen's still here. Stephen, go ahead and let him know real quick why we're talking about removing that item. Sewer lift station one.
Doesn't need to be replaced, it just needs to be rehapped. We're close to what was put in for it. So we're actually going to get the, we're going to get submersible pumps in. In and out. And it works, and that should be happening next month.
And Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you say that if that pump goes out, that you have the talent to go ahead and have it replaced?
Yes.
In-house. So what we did, based off of what information we had when this budget fiscal year '25 was developed, was we included $170,000 for sewer lift station out of the water fund. That no longer is the case, and that's why that's been removed on here. And that money, now, we do have sewer lift station work done, the, I guess, the refurbishing of it, and that's going to be, we're going to need to pay that. We also have a generator in the water fund that was, why it went there, I don't know, it should have actually went in the sewer lift, in the sewer fund, but for 65.5, for a backup generator for the sewer fund, for the sewer treatment plant, the, there's no reason why that 170 can't take care of both and still leave about 50,000 left over. That frees up 65 over on the water fund side. Remember, you got water fund, sewer fund, and I'm not talking about how the audits, they list it different ways, but water fund, sewer fund, drainage fund, intermarina fund, but in this case, so if you think about that 170, it's no longer needed in that sense. We're going to reallocate those funds for still doing some of the things, refurbishing it, and are you going to have a pump on hand from here on out? So we're going to have that stuff on hand, so if it goes down, I think you told me it's about an hour, replace it?
Maybe.
Okay. It's, it's something, we didn't have that talent before, we have it now, so, yeah. And the next item on there is debris rem.
Can I just ask a question on that? When is the last time we visited sewer rates?
We.
I think it's been.
I don't know. I, since I've been here, we haven't.
Five years.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
I know some people.
I don't remember it since 2019, so however long ago that is. I think we should take a look at that maybe in the budget? Okay.
Well, with that and among others, but I just wanted to make sure that you're at least looking at them and say what you want us to do. The debris removal program, remember, the criteria this year, last year, we kind of made some, a lot of exceptions, but this year, we're trying to stick with the way it's designed, 100,000 or greater, as we talked about on February 22nd. Debris removal isn't really a CIP program in that nature. It's a new program and service, which is basically what you did tonight for that curbside brush program. Again, it was pulled from the original list because that's something that we're mandated to do, we're set up to do, and we'll be doing, moving forward. So again, it's a new program or service, and.
Like maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, for here, yeah, I think you're right. On the page two, it goes from six to 10, and this, again, the stars, the asterisks off to the left tells you how you all considered it. Next page is 11 to 20 years, again, asterisks trailing down, and the ones, when you see one asterisk, they just filled in wherever they filled in, it was no priority given.
To clarify, this wasn't just council, we had the department heads.
Yes.
Attending and participating in this also.
Yes. Then the next page is a five-year capital improvements project. That needs to be in the budget as it is in the current budget. What I wanted to let you know is, you just approved us to go ahead and enter a contract with KPA Engineering or Engineering Services, General Engineering Services. What their approach is, and what I shared with you as well, is they will assess everything citywide and give us a report back and tell us, based off of what's public safety, health, and welfare, which they would recommend go first. It's your all's decision, no one's making that for you, but at the same time, you're getting more information. This year is a placeholder, but certainly fiscal year '26 is loaded up a certain way, so that we definitely need to address some of these things. Now, the stuff in red are things that, and I'll explain that here in a second, but I want you to know that that assessment really needs to be done before you come up with a capital improvements program that addresses all your needs from a strategic standpoint. You don't have that now, we've never had it, but you will have it in given time, and I, it may not be ready for this budget, because we've got to get this budget through, but we are looking at bringing that back to you, and this will be modified based off of that information. In fact, the whole one to five, six to 10, 11 to 20 will all be modified based off of off of that information, I'm assuming. Because you're having some engineer telling you, yeah. Ground storage tank number two, which is scheduled for twenty-seven, is actually on twenty-sixth. You'll see that coming up on this, on this five-year, excuse me, five-year capital improvement projects plan.
Does KPA have a timeline on?
They, the assessment, we didn't say, but I definitely need to do that, and there's one on the parks, I'm trying to get moving, I was going to talk about that tonight as well.
Yeah, I guess we don't have an amount on those assessments yet.
No.
How much it's going to cost.
No, no, no. But I do think they can give us projections, and they can also factor in, yeah, I've got eight, but they build that into the project, so I don't know what it will cost. We'll get that first before we. Not a big city, it shouldn't take, I don't think it's going to be a robust amount of money, but I could be wrong. Fiscal year one, this is fiscal year number one. Everything from water, sewer, drainage, whatever. Then what I like, and if you all agree with that concept, that will be our path forward instead of spending a little, do the first year.
And you're going to work with Parks and Rec Committee on that, right?
Yeah, I've already reached out to them, we've already had a discussion, I think.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about the engineering firm, okay.
No, no, well, that's because.
Part of the puzzle.
Okay, but you guys are going to be looped in on all of that.
Everybody, council will actually be the one that agrees to it, but the Parks and Rec.
Go through Parks and Rec.
Everybody's not in.
They are a formal committee of the.
They are, they are.
I want to make sure.
And what we're trying to do is get the engineers to have that same discussion with them and council before they do a conceptual design. The whole idea is, if you take that conceptual design, divide it by four and say, and you know where I'm talking about on some of the equipment, it's, it's commercial-grade equipment that you can phase in over the course of three, four years, however you want to do it, this, four, you can do it less or more. The whole idea is, you can, in four years, you can have your park completely redone at a cost, and you do, pay as you go, and it's a much better way than trying to go look for grants with your finances the way they are. Even if you had your finances, there's other priorities, you really, that eighty-twenty, eighty-twenty funding, twenty percent match, there's better to use those dollars and other things and use these dollars to do something in a phased approach and free up those opportunities for other things that are just as actually more important, but talking about water, infrastructures like that.
So, have the, so Antsy Park had some playground damages, and has that all been repaired?
It's not, it was removed, and so that, that is what we're working towards.
Okay.
Actually replacing what was removed.
We haven't done anything on that.
We have not, because we've been waiting, well, we had a tornado, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like.
Well, and the other thing is, the thing it is, the price tag on doing things, everything from not only the playgrounds itself, but ADA compliant, whether it's the bedrooms, bathrooms, or whether it's the parking lots and stuff, it really runs in some money. If you take this approach, what I'm suggesting, I think it really gets us where you really want to be, and you can, you'll see it grow, we'll do landscaping each year, there's a way to do it, the cost is manageable. Whereas you go the other way, you're going to take care of ADA requirements first and foremost, they won't, they're not, you're not going to get off first base. So, that's just a question, you all can say, no, we don't want to do it, so be it. But if you say yes, I think you'll get to the same end game, and it will look very.
And Parks and Rec is putting together a proposal to actually present to council.
Okay, yeah.
And so, about a couple of different other things, this one included, so.
So, going back down that list, Antsy Park, we talked about twenty-four eighty-three, I'm not sure really, you know, I can't talk about everything that's heard, but I'm going to wait and see if I can get in touch with someone to see where we're at on that. Roadway improvements, the next one, council adopted a roadway improvement plan in twenty-four. That's just, that's something that is only two stars, but it's one of those things you're, you've obviously set money aside, you've adopted a plan, the whole idea is to execute. Rehab, water, elevated storage tank.
We take one.
What?
Year one, even if we take year one of the road study and do it over two or three years, I mean, it's just getting going.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we don't have to take the whole plan as it was given to us.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, now, don't get me wrong, you've got four hundred and thirty thousand dollars still sitting there, it's still a sizable amount of money. And the bid that I saw, which we're not ready to bring to you all yet, because it has to be evaluated and see the details, but it came in, what, sixty thousand less? Roughly, sixty thousand less than what we budgeted, so that's sixty there. If we get some of these other revenues that we're anticipating, there might be a way to still stay on it, but I can't guarantee that. I need to get further along to say whether we can still do that six hundred, but I can't say that tonight. And I, I think it'd be, on my part, it'd be a little bit, I want to manage expectations. It's so important to say, if we, we say we can do it, we can do it, if we can't, we can't. And this is one where we might still be able to pull it off, but right now, you're still looking at four hundred and thirty thousand dollars toward roads, that's going to get some things done. Okay? All right. Rehab, water, elevated storage tank, number two, that's the one that, about the size of a quarter, I was told, that sprung a leak. That has been patched, and Stephen, that's good, far as you know, for now. So, the engineers, again, that's going to be one of those things they're going to evaluate to see where we're at. It was scheduled to be acted on in twenty-seven, the rehab, but we need to move it up to this year, given what happened. And of course, we'll wait for the engineers to give us the final word, to recommend a human way or another, but that's, that's why that's on here, and it was, it was actually on a six to ten timeframe, okay? Marina Dock D, refloat, we have a core lease, and we really need to move that up, there's a couple of big expenditures on the marina, that's one of them. And then, remember, we raised the marina rates last, or this, for this fiscal year to do that. And what you'll see in the next year is the Dock E, refloat. So, those are things, for the lease, we need to take care of, things that deals with health, safety, and welfare of patriots by contract, we still have to deal with the things. We're dealing with, for example, awful topic real quick, we've got mold in there from the storm that we've identified, definitely it's there. Is that tonight's budget adjustment dealt with that one as well? No, it's coming up on the tenth? Okay. We're going to go ahead and do.
That's not included in the one eighteen for the marina?
No, that was just for floating the docks.
Is that an additional TML insurance claim?
They don't have flood, we don't have flood insurance, so.
They might have mold.
It might have mold.
They might, they might, they answered. I'll say this, right now, what I'm trying to get accomplished is, is to make sure we get that captured and brought before you, but I need to act on it, it's a public health, safety, and welfare issue, and by lease, we're bound to do it. So, I'm moving forward with that. We've had them come out and look, they said it's going to cost eight thousand dollars to remove it, estimate, and then we need to repair that. The core, the only question I have, and I think we're okay with the core because it says we are responsible for doing that, I don't see them giving us a problem with that. We're basically trying to make it whole, but. Yeah, it could be more, we don't know.
It will be more.
Yeah, we understand mold.
Badly.
But it's something that's imperative to get moving, so we need, we've, we've got the estimate, we're moving forward with it, but it's under fifty thousand, but I need to go ahead and execute the contract, knowing full well, the fund has the funding for it, I don't, I'm not worried about the marina fund, we hardly ever draw on it, except, but these are big drawsdowns, the marina dock.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, because I don't like doing that. I want to go back to that, because the fact of the matter is, is that whole structure probably needs to be torn down, rebuilt completely, right?
We talked about that.
So, let's say, and I'm just making up numbers, a thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars to do mold mitigation, there's still siding that needs to be done. The reason that there's mold in there is from the tornado on May twenty-second, right? And so, there is definitely going to be some sort of coverage that has to do with that, because we've had to wait. And so, I think, you know, I.
Yeah, and the other thing is, the last time I saw the marina fund balance, which was several years ago, and we've just made money since, was four hundred thousand dollars. So, the marina has the money, and so maybe looking at rebuilding is.
Actually, bring in another one, said it there, the question was posed from Catrice, have we heard back at all about whether she can rebuild, or whether, has BJ ever reached out to them that you know of? Okay. We need to know whether, which is cheaper route. At the same time, if it's something that they're going to take two, three years to answer on, it's not worth it, just fix it and get it up and running.
Who is taking two to three years to answer?
I'm saying, if it takes Corps of Engineers to respond, and they can take long term, they probably won't, but you never know. So, I just asked BJ to reach out, I think him and Catrice will figure out what we can and can't do, but ideally, if we can't do anything else, it's going to be, we know the mold's there, it's going to, whether it's destroyed or not, the mold's going to go and get fixed, like asbestos, you're not going to get out of that. So, let's see where we're at on that and see if we can get the estimate. If the Corps says no, it's a process to bring a different building in, and it's going to take the normal, you know, it could take six months to a year, whatever, it's not, we can fix this a lot faster, because we got people internal that can do some of that.
It still needs to be supplemented to the insurance company, though.
Anything that we can, we'll go back and look at it again. I've just, just right now, I don't know for sure, and again, I don't.
Right, I just, you know.
Just have to file it.
Right.
Let them say no.
The worst thing they can say is no.
And they have, you know, it's like the FEMA said no on some things, okay, well, we've tried, and let's move on, you know, that kind of thing.
Only other thing, is there any code changes that go through putting a new building up versus repairing the old?
There would be. Right, and I just don't know what they're going to tell us.
Yeah.
But, because that's, everything that happens on leased property from the Corps has to be approved by them. These things, I think there's a built-in provision that allows us to make the corrections, but if it's going to cost a lot of extra money, when we can just replace it for the same amount, why not get a brand-new building out of it? I want to say, Dorothy spoke about, all of our fund balances, I want to see where there's, we're spot-on, know exactly where we're at. I'm not comfortable with anything to this date, but I'm more comfortable with this fund.
Me too, because it's separate.
Right.
And it's been audited, so I'm coming on the audit.
Right, you may not, you may not agree with what I say something here in a minute, but that right there, but the marina dock.
Wrong, they're audited.
Yeah, yeah. The marina dock, D, refloat, they're not cheap, but that's one of them, then the E, and then we skip a year on here to do the wake.
Breakwater.
Break, the break, the wave break, okay? That's just something that, give it a little bit of time to fund recoup, and then go hit that other one. The next one is twenty-four eighty-three, TexDOT, Shared Use Path, that project, that's something that's grant-based, it's already in progress, that really needs to be done this year. It should be done in the of twenty-six. In fact, we're going to meet tomorrow on that with TexDOT.
You're taking into consideration, and I've had many residents remind me of this, that in case twenty-four eighty-three gets expanded to four lanes, that that's not going to impact this sidewalk deal, right? They're going to take expansion into consideration.
I'll tell you what I was told offline, there's people, there are cities that would say, let us have it, TexDOT, we thought, they thought, would say, by all means, get it away, because they historically said they didn't want it, from what I heard. But now, it's, no, no, they're not looking at giving it up. So, I don't know what's going to happen, they know more than we do what the future build out of that roadway will be, and I'm, but I've never seen TexDOT ever spend money like that and turn around and destroy what they built. I haven't seen it, so. Spruce.
I thirty-five.
Okay.
I, I fourteen.
You got me on that one. You got me, I thirty-five. That's true, but they never finished I thirty-five, so is it really? Spruce Drive Waterline, that's a discussion we're going to talk later on tonight about, later on. Fiscal year twenty-seven, same thing, pretty much the same across, except I added, took off what's no longer going to be applicable, and then add Marina Dock E. Fiscal year twenty-eight, pretty much, those are placeholders for now, pretty much staying consistent. I figure the water well will take us no more than three to get it completed, and, and then the water main replacement program, phase one, will be using Texas Water Development Board funding as our goal, and likely will happen fairly without issue to tell us where we're at. And then phase one could be, probably not phase, that would be phase one, phase two would be the actual start and replacing them, but we need that study done first.
I can't remember, on refloating the docks, isn't there a core deadline?
There is, that's why we're trying to move it up a little bit earlier.
Yeah. That's going to be mandatory.
Yeah, so we're, we'll make it, if we get moving, we'll be all right. And the last thing, the marina wave potentiator, the wave break, whatever that is. If you go on the next page, it's fiscal year twenty-thirty, same kind of thing, what you see different here is the development twenty-four eighty-three, that can change, and I'll let you all know when I find more information. Roadway improvements, so the for the next five years, we'll just stay up on hitting these things, and that will be that much less than we have to do the next time around. Keep, keep our eye on the prize. Fire apparatus is a quint, very expensive nowadays, what, about two million now? Probably, okay.
What's used?
Yeah, but it's, whether, given what they, given what they cost, we can't go new, obviously, but we might be able to find a way to get there, and there's, depends. I mean, there's a lot of things FD needs that we might be able to get grants for. I really, I feel more optimistic about where we're heading than I did this time last year. So, I would say that anything we can get, like SBCAs, SEBA, is that what they're called? Yeah, the, the breathing apparatus, the tanks that they wear, they're real expensive, what are they, for Taren? What are the, the breathing apparatus? Yeah, what do they cost, roughly? Still a major expenditure, we, and we don't know what grant opportunities are coming open, we don't know a lot of things right now. But grants for that, and also, is it the cardiac monitor slash defibrillator, or just the monitors? Okay. Okay, okay. So, and how many of those you need, just one? Yeah, okay. So, those are things that we might find other funding sources instead of using tax dollars for that, so we'll see how it goes. But the quints, something that, this is how you ranked them, and they were left, I kept them there, except I added some things that needed to be factored in. And then the next one is, says the following capital improvement projects are initially planned, remember the key words, initially planned, to be partially funded or entirely funded through the normal budgetary process as council, by council, as you all approve it. And it goes in the needs, before you do any kind of public safety facility, there's a needs assessment, site survey, and feasibility study that needs to be conducted, and that depends on whether you want to do it citywide, or all buildings, you only got three or four major buildings. It might be a wise thing that don't have them, come back later and do it, go ahead and see, and do them all at the same time. That remains to be seen. But those two things for that, and the public utilities facility ranked with two, one's with three asterisks, one, next one with two. Fire hydrants and the cardiac monitors I just talked about, ADA improvements for city facilities, emergency operations centers, sidewalks, and bike trails, and signage for NPR. A lot of that stuff can either be started with existing budgetary funds and/or at least perhaps even entirely funded, depends. Those last two pages are what I need you to look at, and if you all can provide some feedback, and if there's, if it's no objection to you all, if I get three people saying the same thing, I wouldn't talk about it to each other, but I would say, if, then what I can do is bring it back with another draft and say, this is what I'm hearing. You all, or you can make a decision tonight, I would prefer as you take it and look it over in relation to the whole document, and let me know, or let, I'll be gone on the tenth, let Mary know what you're all looking at, have in that discussion again. It's really important so we can get this included in the budget.
Camille, can you make sure that's on our workshop, or when do you want it on our workshop?
The tenth.
The tenth, June tenth, please?
Okay, so that's really all I want to do, is share those things with you, and the next thing I'd like to talk about. Just keep in mind, this is a working draft, this is not, it's a hundred percent.
Well, I, just as a caveat, I hope on all these issues, we're not talking people about who did what, I mean, we're talking about the issues, and we'll just constantly stay focused on issues. So, I think that's important.
I don't want.
Of course, it's never about the people.
I don't want to.
That's your job.
I don't want to point fingers, because I don't really know the facts, and I want to manage expectations that, saying that, this, but this is basically, if you hear us talk, Dorothy and I have talked about aging accounts receivable, well, I'm not even sure if we got a report, did we ever find that report? No such thing? I didn't think so. All right, so. There's usually like, you know, zero to thirty, or one to thirty, thirty to sixty, sixty and ninety, ninety-one plus, and that, a lot of businesses use that to see, you know, if anything, if everything's packing right, and if it, those that are the far end of the ninety-plus are concerning. Well, we've got years and years of accounts receivable on the books. If you look at this report, I'm going to start from the far left, and this is just for the water fund, it's the working draft water fund. I want you to start from the far left, and you'll see audit year, I'll even, do it this way. All right, so, starting here, audit year, the accounts receivable, the difference between the two, the dollar amounts, and I'm going to explain that here in a little bit. You've got the mean. You've got the mean average for the dollar, you've got, uh, one across the board here, WS is water sewer, sometimes you see an audit with water, sometimes a sewer, sometimes water sewer and sewer, but just, this water sewer, it's basically what I'm trying to do is track the cash flow. And if you're not familiar with that, that's the total receipts received, but that doesn't mean there's not adjustments in there, that's usually purged for auditing purposes or for financials. But it also, uh, includes things that are besides water revenue. So when they say accounts receivable, they're talking as a whole, they're talking about things like water, that they're also talking about garbage, other things that's collected in total receipts, okay? Then you go through to the right, and that's a difference, dollar difference, and the accounts receivable as a percentage of, of cash flow, that's something that is another measurement, nothing in isolation really speaks, uh, to everything. Total gallons used, this is according to the water department by fiscal year, and so we got those numbers, and then the difference of that's off to the right. When we had our audits done, going back for 2020, let's go, let's go back to the very bottom, fiscal year 15, 16, 17, and 18, we have audits. And this information is reflected as far as that goes, as far as accounts receivables. Then we skipped two audits, because they weren't done, and we got 21 and 22. If you look from the bottom up, you'll see that between fiscal year 15 and 16, we jumped about $20,000 in accounts receivable. Remember, forget about the 30, 60, 90, 91 plus, because we don't have that. We have a total number, actually, in almost all these, where when they hooked up, when they had service, uh, connected, and we just kept those, uh, for later dates to collect. So, so accounts, aging accounts receivable reports really useless, because I don't have anything to work with. But what I do have is audits, audits are what actually occurred, you mentioned it just a minute ago, that's what, that's what they're telling us. So what I did, what I've got here is.
Well, that's what we told them, we told them we had $530,000 in accounts receivable, they audited it.
Tested.
And they tested it, right. They didn't tell us that, that's what was on our books, okay?
So the 15 to 16, we've got $20,000 increase, 16 to 17, we've got $23,000, still in our range. 16 to 17, I'm sorry, 17 to 18, we've got 18, eight, but still pretty close. Then we don't have, there's a big void, and then if you go up to the, when we start audits again, in fiscal year 21, we've got $512,000, huge jump. And then we jumped at 530, but that, we're right back to the same spread, about 18,000. So we've jumped between those two years, missing a total of 127%. 287,000, $106,000. Highly unlikely.
Okay, here's what we were told.
I don't know.
No, here's what we were told, and if you look at it going from, well, if you look at the revenue, it might make sense. But we were told that during COVID, uh, that employees were working from home, they didn't always have access to the system, and that we missed a couple months of billing our water customers. And that's what we were told by Carrie and Dalton, and even the auditors at the time.
Is that your understanding?
Okay, so, but, but. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so you got 127% jump, 287,000, so obviously, like, you need to know why we jumped so much in that period. The average dollar, you took the four, uh, periods, we have actual differences, and the average amount of being would be about 24. Going to the cash flow though, and that's the, kind of goes along with what you're talking about. Going back to the bottom now, 2015, we won 1.8 million, just a little bit over. And then 2016, we, no, look, 2015, move to the right, you see, this total gallons, 127,000 gallons, we used. Not purchased, but used, right? 2016, we dropped almost $200,000. And, but we used 159,000 gallons, we used 12,000 gallons more, but yet we, and there were, we dropped, we were $200,000.
And 19 is also when we had the water rate increase. So it, there may be something.
This is 16.
I'm just throwing out a little history.
So then, go up to 17, you see, we made back that 200, we jumped back up, so that's, you know, look, the 2015, 16, the cash flows, they're, if, that's pretty much consistent, with the exception of that dip of 200,000. But when it did come back, right at the same, pretty much where you were in 2015. So 2017 is 18, oh nine, uh, 1.8 million in 2018. And then you go to 2019, you say, what is your rate in 2019?
Yes, I think it was August.
Okay, but we dropped, well, maybe some of that would be there.
Yeah, yeah.
But 2019.
It'd be 19, 20.
236,000 dollars, and, but if you look at the total gallons used, it was 180 million. From 161.
Right.
There's a 19 million gallons of increase of use, and we lost 236, not lost, we, we did not collect 236,000 dollars.
Right, right.
Highly, uh, not saying there's anything suspicious, but highly unlikely, given the cash flows, but then again, I don't have all the facts. So, but this is something that, that we're going in on, and then in 2020, well, there we are, we, we made up 532,000 difference, uh, up to 2.1 million. And then in 2021, we increased to 2.175, again, that 27, we're right back to where we were before. And then in 2022, we jumped up 222,000. I do know in 2021, March, I believe it is, that the final plat for Rancho Delago was signed off on, and. Is that about right? What you remember, okay, so, that would understand, there's about 53 new lots, ballpark-ish, I'm not the exact number, and that would account for a sizable number of that. So that's kind of like what I'm looking at, and then, uh, without these, and, and I guess I'll put it this way. When I got here, there was talk about, I think, uh, the previous finance director mentioned something to the effect of a compilation engagement letter. And that's basically where, in my opinion, I'm going to come on.
They don't, they just put it together.
They don't, yeah, yeah.
They don't look at anything.
Right, there's no testing.
Yep.
There's no assurance, it's basically what we give them, is what they put in financials, and there you go.
Reformatted.
Hardly disagree with that.
Right.
And the reason I say that is because you've got some red flags here, that definitely not saying there's anything wrong with it, but until that's answered, you really don't know. I need 19 and 20 dollars. So instead of that compilation engagement, we really need an audit engagement. So, uh, I wanted to pass that on to you, it's a working document, I looked at.
I've been raising this issue for over a year.
I know you have, and I appreciate it, I wanted to have an aging report that, hey, here you go.
I know.
Who don't have crap?
You know, and I, I, I hear you loud and clear on wanting to have everything audited. To put the staff through that is Herculean. Do we want to attack what we think is the problem and get a forensic audit on our water, water fund only? Or, okay, independent audit on the water fund only? If this is, this is a red flag, and if we have to write off $550,000 worth of revenue, um, it.
I'm not sure.
I don't even, I know, I'm not saying we do either, but we need to get to the bottom of it.
The risk we run is when we jump from one year, and you jump up, that's why when I came on board, and, and I was told by the finance director that they, they did 21, I said, 19, 10. And, and there's some reason you might know how they did, I don't know, to me, it made no sense, because.
They just didn't do them.
I know, well, I know, but how do you, how do you track stuff, that, that's why we have, I'm not saying that's why.
There was no analytical, analytical analysis done of our financial statements, we still don't have analytical analysis done of our financial statements. We've got to get there, but, yeah, we will get there.
We will.
Yeah.
But I guess my point is to understand, um, because they could be totally innocent and stuff, they could have done injuries that just went backwards and created this mess. Or there's some other anomaly, anomaly.
Anomaly?
Anomaly that explains it, but you have to, and they're pretty much the same kind of, uh.
Maybe we could talk to the auditors, maybe not this, maybe not our current.
Because I want them to tell me how you got, uh, up to 512.
Of course, that's the first step, because they, they opined on 22.
But what I want to do, and I expect 23 is going to have another 550, uh, probably 550 range, 560.
And we had an increase.
Yeah.
So that could even.
Well, that's for 24, I'm talking about.
Oh, 23, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
So I expected to go up some, but the, the pattern that was there, we, we lost it, because we didn't do audits, the pattern's returned, and my guess is it's going to stay pretty much consistent, except for those things like Rancho Delago or something like that. Alls I'm saying is, please look at this and understand that I'm not ignoring it, but at the same time, I really honestly think we need to do it, and I know we've got priorities through the fiscal year 23, 24, 25, I got that.
Do we want to consider just a water fund-only audit? That's my question to you.
Uh, but all these receipts and stuff, uh, we got, we have the N code, which we're hanging on to, because I really need to have it. Uh, you really need to have it, but I, I'm just letting you know why I feel, because back when, I think you were the first person to tell me about the, uh, you bought it during audit.
The audit, when they presented the audit for 22, yeah.
And I was asking, uh, the former finance director, I said, explain to me how we got, because I heard it, and I wasn't comfortable with him. Nothing against him, I don't know if he was, or part of it, so I just felt there was some, well, two stories. Well, this is kind of explaining, yeah, there is a story here, there, there's a discovery period that we need to go through. I just let you know what we're doing on the side, not, uh, saying we have to do it today, but I definitely, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Uh, to do this, I don't know where the answer is going to be, I will say this, if it is fraudulent, I tell you, I'm not saying this, but if it were, I would strongly suggest we go after those people, and unless the statute of limitations expires, which in this case, it's fine. Okay, so anyway, we are looking at different things, I'm not saying it happened, too, it could be just a TL entry, uh, just jacking it up, I don't know. Uh, they had people, from my understanding, during those periods that really worked solid in a lot of things, and maybe that created this mess, and it's just something that's more that, because you have the receipts, we show that, and that's going to tell us a lot. Anyway, so I wanted to share that, and, um, so this is for, on the.
Are you having fun yet, Mary?
He signed on the dollar.
Thank God.
Yeah. And so, uh, that was for fiscal year. The water fund, I want to talk about that, CIP was for fiscal year 20, uh, 26, and do we have a budget calendar? You what? Do we bring it? All right, we're, we're getting the budget calendar ready, a lot of this stuff's mandated by, we've already collected it, and they've been given this stuff, so we'll leave that for the requirements, public notices, and all that stuff, without saying. But I, I'm asking, and you said something earlier, Dorothy, about meeting as much time we need, uh, we told that to Mary during the discussion earlier. And that's basically the same thing I asked you, Mayor, that's, if I had one concern, it's having attention to detail, to, to inform you and to act on action items. Nothing against all the other stuff, it's important, but it's not as important as what we're talking about here. This is, this is what you get paid to do, you get paid to do, and I'm, I'm talking to the choir, I'm sure, but you're in charge of the public funding and financing, you need to make sure you get, make good decisions, and I need that time, that, you know, yeah, I'm taking it, you can't give it to everybody. But special sessions are one way to do it, and that's why we really need this one. We'll probably have one, but, uh, as a placeholder, if I don't get a special session, we're going to have to squeeze it in on the regular session. But I need to talk and have you all make decisions and give me guidance in what you're looking for. I got your CIP stuff, that's really important, if you can get that back to Mary between now and the 10th, that would be very beneficial.
And honestly, if we could just get more time on some things, I know I'm probably more, you know, rolling up my sleeves, getting into it, but to get it at noon today, and then, you know, try to decipher through the spreadsheets and stuff. Information, you want decisions from us, I am asking you to give us the information a little earlier, okay? So that we have time to.
That wasn't ready, I think it was, uh, uh, what? Yeah, we were waiting for extra revenue to come in, I really want that on there, because if I don't recognize your revenue, we can't spend it, just like the stuff.
We just need time.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
I got, and we'll get as much as advanced as we can, and, uh, that I assure you, we.
I don't mind getting it, and then say, you know, pending FEMA and TIDOM or whatever.
No, but if a budget amendment, I can't, I got to have either, I have the revenue or I don't, I can't not.
You wouldn't put it in the amendment, but you would just tell us.
But I would need an amendment so I can spend the money, so the whole idea is I've got bills coming in that they're not planned to have. So in order to pay that money, I found, I've got extra revenue, that's 60,000 per FEMA is a good example. I would prefer to have it on this one, so you approved it, and I can go ahead and know that those bills that we've already spent for IRS from, uh, 2020, 2021, okay? That I have a, I have 30,000 that made up, so it would just, just making sure.
Timing, okay.
Yeah, that's all it was. Um, okay, so that's 26 budgets, CIP, very important, calendar, we're, we're still working on that.
So will the budget calendar be presented at the June meeting?
It's, uh, it should be, I, I thought it was going to be here tonight, so I'm assuming that, that's all right, if nothing else, let's get it wrapped up. I know the hard dates are the state, uh, state mandated ones, that's not an option, but really, the only thing I would normally do, other than that, is show you the dates that I need to meet with you. Honestly, I'm going to, so really, I wouldn't even count on that part. If you want to, in fact, if you just want to send the budget calendar, the, from the state, um, now, make sure it all applies to, uh, general law A, because there's different rules for us in a home rule, but I think it distinguishes between the two, just send that to them, so you'll know some of the important dates. But I need, we need to do more budget meetings, so simple as that, and I don't want to be held back saying, um, you got to wait till, sorry, I told you, this is what we're going to do. I want to say, let's just do them when we need them, and you're all up for it, I'm up for it, and it will work better than long.
That's one of the most important things we do.
Yes, it is, yes, it is, yes, it is. Okay, and then the next thing, Mayor, um, you've got the finance director, did you have anything else to provide for an update? And some of the revenue was coming in and hitting the wrong accounts, we had some INS stuff, that was a second, separate tax rate, separate INS. And it was hitting our maintenance operation account, so we had to back that off, and of course, get the right number, so there's, it's just, it's just constantly tweaking it. But that's why I told you, say the very person we gave you, and I don't think we provided these guys, because they weren't on board then. So if we can go back, I don't know if we can.
Yeah. So this says May 31st, I'm assuming it's April 30th.
No, that's the period they run, but, but they're the upper rights when they ran it, so it's.
So it says as of May 31st.
Yes.
So that's April 30th, right?
No, 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 that's, that, well, when you do that.
Can we get a month-end one? Well, maybe at the June meeting, but, I mean, we need months.
Well, it's.
Otherwise, this is only 27.
It's a little bit earlier.
I hear you, I just am never used to seeing a mid-month report.
Well, it's not.
Because the budgets, I mean, the budget's by month, not by day.
Because the revenue that hits in, any kind of reconciliations, it's going to show up on this when they're done. I'd rather have you, this is the latest of what we have, in other words.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was as of April, that's my question, it's not as of April. Okay, well, then maybe in June, we can get one as of May 31. Well, then maybe in June, we can get one as of May thirty-first.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Ideally, what we'll have here, this is coming, once we get the salary and benefits aligned like they're supposed to and get a few more adjustments, it will actually, and once we're there, we'll be taking, we'll be providing it to you, but it will go on our website, on Euro's website, on a actual, this is the, uh, budget, our revenue and expenditure report. You'll start seeing it hit there on a regular basis, so...
Everybody, I mean, I'm getting lots of comments from residents. They haven't seen financial statements in forever.
Well, yeah.
So that's great. And if you want a stamp at the top, un-audited, not yet reviewed, whatever...
Well, we're almost to that cusp. We want them to have it, but I don't want bad information. So this is...
I understand.
So I think, I think it's all coming together like it's supposed to.
Okay, super. So... Surprise. Right. Okay.
Today.
Okay, alright, thanks.
And what adjustments are going to be, see it next time around by, by June tenth, I'm assuming.
So the IRS didn't penalize us for... They did, okay, we paid penalty. Okay. I was wondering.
So I'm next in line, Mayor. Can I go ahead and do city manager update? Alright, um, comprehensive plan has been collected and the final invoice provided. They told us not to pay it. We got a credit memo, we've got that in our possession now. So we are separating ourselves from Call Your Engineering. They're done. And the audit, excuse me, the, um, comprehensive plan has been delivered to us and it has been forwarded to Ken. Talked to Ken today. Ken's going to start working on, uh, month to month as council directed, to start vetting it through staff, E and Z, what have you. Bring it before council or their input and what have you, chapter by chapter. Let's just get through it. And then at the end of this period, however fast it goes, you can, and we can have special meetings if you want that. However you all want to do it, just let me squeeze budget in there in the middle of that person. Have your priority. But if we can get this stuff, uh, knocked out chapter to chapter, wrap that thing up. How many chapters are there? My, my, chapters? Twelve, thirteen? Okay. So that, once that's done, then we can go ahead, we'll have to do the public hearings. There's different processes you have to follow in order to do that, because there's a change and everything else. But at least you've got a document that you're comfortable with. I think everybody agrees it wasn't working out. Anyway, and it was like, Nida's been pulling left, I mean, like, like pulling teeth trying to get this, just to cross it out. Anyway.
Ridiculous, but...
It is. Okay, so I wanted to provide some updates real quick. On the FEMA, I told you about the five hundred thousand, a little bit more than what we've got. Remember, that's money you've already spent. We're just putting that money back and we're, we're all back into the fund balance. We're recognizing it, um, and it will just, it will just come back and we did reckon, no, well, I'm sorry. We recognized six hundred and fourteen of that. So we'll get more than that. The next one we get, we'll go over that six fourteen and that difference between the total amount and six fourteen. We'll bring back for a budget amendment to recognize revenues and see where we're on expenses and whether we spent it for something. Could be going for roads, I don't know. I don't want to get hit with that. I know we...
We need to understand what's in our fund balance at some point. Do you have a target? Do you have a target for that?
Until every...
Know, know is a fine answer. I'm just asking, do we have a target to know our fund balances? Not yet.
I'm not satisfied.
Not yet, okay.
And the reason I say that is because I want to know exactly what's already been earmarked. And I want the money in the buckets. And right now, they're not. Do we have more money in the bank than we had last month? Yeah. That's, that is the meaning. It's cash in the bank and the checks are still getting written on things. So I would say ignore it and the answer is no, we don't. Give us time, we're going to get a hundred percent knowing where we stand and there's no, there's no, no light between the buckets. You know, we're going to know exactly where it's at. Um, hundred sixty-eight thousand, we're waiting for T D M. We got two seventy-five to three hundred thousand more coming in, but we're not going to count it until we obviously get it. Burn pit, uh, we sent you an email on. You know that, um, we've got to do something with the debris and yes, it caused a fire since then. It's been out, the program, you've got tonight running. We'll see where it goes and hopefully we'll see some good results, short term and long term. Water storage tank is closed. Last bill, we keep sending the check out, they keep sending it back to us, how many times? Newsman. Those are different, okay, it's done. So the last payment's paid, the thing works. You're satisfied with it, Stephen? We're all good. The project, brown storage tank is...
About that.
Texat Sidewalk, again, we're meeting tomorrow, but they're meeting on a sixty percent decline. Is that what it is? And keep in mind, I'm going to be getting with, uh, developer there in that area and seeing what they're looking at. He's looking at doing and seeing how it's in. You all will be the final decider, but we want to spin off those kind of, uh, of developments to the benefit of the city as a whole. So right now, I just don't have it. He's talking to us. We know he's looking at doing assessment of what he's going to do. Once he makes up his mind, we're going to, and it, we'll just see where it goes from there. But you all will be the ones who decides on the lighting and stuff like that. Next one, advisor. Because of our uncertainty about our fund balance and how much we, uh, will be issuing in the future, stuff like that. It's unclear at this stage and we've got someone offering a price. But that was the extent of it and not, and not respond to RFQ. So I'm willing to, we're going to get everybody trained up and we're going to start forward in a very calculated way. Not to overextend ourselves, but definitely do be good stewards as our policy says. You will have, you will have to issue... Send a letter, it's going to happen. And that debt, when you, let's say, I'm just giving example, let's say you issued fifteen million dollars in debt. That sixteen, fifteen million will sit in the bank and will be released at certain times. And those dollars will make you money, but you've got a timeline to use it. There's state laws saying you just can't sell it and the interest rates are good. You're playing on it. It's not allowed. But what we'll do, starting to, uh, prepare ourselves for that. But I still think an investment advisor is the only way to go when you start dropping ten, fifteen million dollars. And you need to release it for projects, but you need to make as much as you can when you're not doing projects. So that's something...
To help get us debt.
What?
Also to help get us debt. I don't think anyone here has gone out for debt, so they would be our guiding...
Exactly. Your bond council is required, there are certain steps you have to take. You just don't get to go out and do it.
Right.
You have to have some guidance on that and approvals. Um, so we'll be working in-house on that. It's, but you're getting what's, uh, I think it's called the cash and bank report, but you actually have, have, and I think it grew by a couple hundred thousand, but because we've been receiving a lot of extra revenue, that doesn't mean much until we know exactly where everything lies. But that's not...
We also get about ninety percent of our property taxes in by now and we still have five months of expenses to pay from those property taxes. So this money is going to pay expenses for the last five months of the year where we're not getting revenue in. So...
Uh, yeah, I think we're doing on the property taxes, I think we've got three point six million in, we expect five, I think, no, I'm sorry. Uh, maintenance operations, we've got, uh, three point, three million in and we're expecting still a hundred and four thousand out. So we collected most of it.
Yep.
We're up, we're, we have three point three percent we haven't collected, so that's good.
But we still have all the expenses left for the rest of the year. So looking at the cash fund that's in the bank doesn't...
Oh, no, no, yeah, you're right. Yeah, yeah.
Budget versus actual is really a...
It's like your household checking account. Don't get it counted crazy if you haven't paid your mortgage. Uh, city purchasing module is up and running. Again, that's a, from this point forward, that means we're striking it like it's supposed to. They won't accept it if it's in the wrong account, if it's got no money in it, things like that. That stuff's stopped. So the staff is learning how to use it. I think I'm hearing good results. They're, they're, they're doing it. Yeah, it's a pain, but I know to start with, but it will pay dividends in the future. And that's basically stopping the bleeding. And I, I guess we've never had one before. Not that anybody knows, okay? Cause I don't think we've ever had one now. So it's, it's something that's sorely needed. So that's good news, not really for the users until they get really accustomed to it, but it's going to help. Um, roadway improvement proposals, uh, we got them back today. One of them came in, five, what, five? The one that didn't qualify, there's certain stipulations that we require them. And one wasn't filled out. So one won't, one won't qualify because they didn't respond, they were not responsive. And the other one that did, we still have a negotiated price, which may come down. Pick it cheaper than that. It's not the same at work, but I, we just got it. We'll have to come before you, before we enter the contract, making sure you're all good with it. Alright, so that's, that's moving forward, um, but we got them in today and we only got one, even though we had a lot of people call. We only got... Didn't make it. Yep.
Yep.
But it may, so, you know, we'll, we'll see where it goes. Um, lightning strike, public utilities, uh, that was last night and it damaged generator, well, the generator's getting replaced anyway.
Which one?
We have a new generator coming in. When does it do it here? So that's something you approved in the budget, we ordered it and they have to build it. And the rest of that's for executive session, I believe. The only thing I would say is the technology side of the house, there's dead stuff you've already approved, but that's bouncing around it because we don't want to advertise it. That is something that, um, is a concern and it was, uh, I think you're the one who talked to me about it offline, but also, I think we've had a discussion, but also Peter reached out and said, hey, look, are, are there certain things we need to do that are, so deals with the technology. So we did that.
Yeah. What's going on? Um, I went to the T M L region nine and they, there was a guy there from the T M L risk pool talking about cybersecurity and the importance of it. So, and so we're right to Dennis and they're already on topic with it.
But it's important. And now we've got this, so we're, we're moving forward with that. Um, and that's it, except for what we're going to do next.
Alright, well, this time we are going to recess from our workshop and we're going to enter into executive session. Uh, we're going to adjourn into executive session for discussion of personal matters pursuant to section five fifty-one dot oh seven four, deliberate regarding real property. Section five fifty-one oh seventy-two for the Texas government code, um, to discuss, uh, the judge, the city manager review and annex.